All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education. This is our regular meeting for Monday, January 11th, 2021, and I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:33. Madam Secretary.
I'm Secretary. But okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you, I'm sorry, for the, for all intensive purposes, just so we can get the, get this moving, would you please just? That's all right. I can do this.
I'll continue until you're, until you.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Berry here, Ms. Elzayet.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
President Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Janoon.
Here.
Um, Ms. Kaminski.
Here.
And Mr. Sabal.
Here.
Okay, President Garcia, you have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, if you would not mind, trustee Berry, if you would not mind reading the consent agenda.
Okay, Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which includes the January 11th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, December 14th, 2020, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and the check registry dated December 1st through December 31st, 2021.
Support.
Okay, so I have support from trust, I'm sorry, Treasurer Kaminsky. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Hearing nothing, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
And for the record, let it show that we have up a nay being entered by trustee Fawaz. All right, and now from that, we have to now make a selection for our vice president. I will now open the floor for nominations.
Mr. President.
Treasurer Kaminsky.
I nominate Nadia Berry.
Okay, and with that, Nadia, I will ask if you will accept a position.
I will, thank you.
And can I get, will we now, oh, ooh, sorry, and now support?
Support.
And we have support from trustee Fawaz for the appointment of Nadia Berry to the position of Vice President. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And congratulations to our new Vice President, Vice President Nadia Berry.
Congrats, Nadia.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for putting your trust in me. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And with that, we will need to fill a seat, and so I have a question. I'm going to, I don't know if I should pose this question to Dr. Lazar or Dr. Musalem, because we will need to post for the position of secretary. Is that something that can be done at this meeting? It is, I believe so. Okay, so with that, I would like to now open the floor for nominations of secretary for the Board of Education.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Vice President Berry.
I nominate Najah Janoon for secretary.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Najah Janoon. Would you accept this nomination?
Uh, yes.
And then we would look for support?
Support.
Support.
So we have support from Treasurer Kaminsky. I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? All right, hearing none, congratulations to our new secretary, Mrs. Janoon.
Yay. I'm all of a sudden really nervous, but thank you.
But what I'm going to do is this, what I'm going to do is this. First, let me congratulate all four of you, the newly elected, the reelection, and then, of course, our two new appointees. So with this being said, what I'm going to ask just for this evening's meeting, if our Vice President will continue to, just for this meeting, take the record, of course, we do have the audio and the video, but if you would not mind just proceeding forward for us, and then what will happen is, we can try to get together so that we can meet, and if not, then Najah, of course, you can always contact Kristen, who will gladly help you in the transitioning for the position.
Okay.
So congratulations to all four of you again. All right. Okay, so moving on, we have our business report, and with that, I will turn it over to our business manager, Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you. We have an action item for number one, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for the upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
President Garcia.
Okay, and I have a hand up, which is Vice President Berry.
Okay, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisition as per attachment 5A1.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mrs. Berry. Do we show supports? Show support?
Support.
Support.
Kaminsky?
Uh, yes, Mrs. trustee, correction, I'm gonna go with these, Kaminsky. And with that, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Number two, approval of refunding resolution. In order to save approximately $30, $30,000 per year on current debt, the Crestwood School District would like to refund the 2011 bond. The 2011 bond is currently being paid with general fund dollars borrowed against the district's current budget. This bond did not increase the amount of homeowners taxes, but was borrowed against our current district revenue.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, I did not see where that came from. I believe it was trustee Kaminsky?
Yep.
Okay.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the attached, I'm sorry, resolution to refund the 2011 debt, see attachment 5A2.
Okay, so we have a motion, and supported by Mrs. Elzayet, trustee Elzayet. Any questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Moving on to our next item, which is going to be this evening's personnel report, I will now turn it over to Dr. Lazar.
Good evening, everybody. We have three action items in the personnel report today. The first is for the appointment of the EL Resource Teacher position at Highview. This position was vacated due to a staff member realigning to a different position in the district. And the recommendation is for Ms. Lisa Gogu. Ms. Gogu has a bachelor degree in elementary education from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She has one year experience as an EL Resource Teacher and seven years as a second grade teacher. Ms. Gogu has experience with administering the VITA assessment and analyzing assessment results in order to support student learning.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Janoon.
So I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lisa Gogi according to CFT Contract BA5 Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law, see Attachment 6A1.
Support.
Uh, support was from trustee Berry. And I believe I need to read this motion again, so my apologies on the last. So the recommended action is that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lisa Gogi according to the CFT Contract BA5 Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law, see Attachment 6A1. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Okay.
Okay, um, our second item today is a request for unpaid leave for Ms. Andrea Thomas, one of our high school social workers. Ms. Thomas is requesting an unpaid leave for family care through the end of the 2020-2021 school year.
Um, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I know that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the unpaid leave for Andrea Thomas through the end of the 2021 school year.
Mr. Chair, are we gonna have discussion?
Uh, once we get support.
Support.
Okay, support by trustee Kaminsky. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Uh, yes, trustee Fawaz.
Um, so I understand the unpaid leave. Would she still have, would she, would we still be paying for health care? Or does the health care get suspended? Or how's that gonna work?
No, according to the contract, she continues to pay her employee contribution for the health care.
So it wouldn't be an FMLA situation, she's just asking to be on unpaid leave and she's still going to pay into her health care?
Correct.
That's correct. Okay, all right. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the unpaid leave of, leave for Andrea Thomas through the end of the 2020-2021 school year.
Okay, the last action item for today in personnel is for a school social worker at Crestwood High School, Ms. Zahra Zaur. Ms. Zahra Zaur holds a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology and Sociology from the University of Michigan Dearborn and a Master's in Social Work from Wayne State University. Ms. Zahra Zaur has four years of experience as a school social worker at Dearborn Public Schools and completed an internship at the Dearborn Academy. In addition, she has worked as a behavioral health case manager for the Arab American Keltyan Council, where she was for four years, and as a family skills preservation program home-based clinician for access for two years. She is CFAS certified and has experience implementing crisis intervention.
Mr. President.
Um, Mrs. Elzayet, yes.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Zahra Zahra Zaur according to the CFT Contract MA3 Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law, see Attachment 6A1.
Support.
Could I get the support again? Who, where was it coming from?
Support.
Sawa. Nadia.
Okay. I, I.
It was Sawa.
Thank you. Okay, so we have support from trustee Elzayet with, correction, a motion by trustee Elzayet with support by trustee Fawaz. Are there any questions?
I have a comment.
Um, yes.
I don't know how you found her, Linda, but kudos to you. I'm so excited, and I know there's such a shortage of social workers. I don't know how we were so lucky, but I'm not gonna second guess.
Um, no, honestly, um, it's been a struggle even to, for the EL Resource Teacher position. The EL Resource Teacher position has been posted for quite a bit. We did have some resumes that came through that got reviewed. But either they were missing the EL endorsement, and as a lead person in the EL Resource Department, that endorsement, I think, is necessary to already be acquired. So we're excited to have both of them. You know, both Ms. Gogu and Ms. Zahra are very, very excited to join the team. You know, I have, I have the privilege of meeting with them when they come in to ask their questions and do their, you know, initial meeting of the people in, in the central office department. And it's always fun to see that excitement that people have to join our team. It really, for me, has been validating when they come in excited to be here. It makes me feel good about the things that we're doing under Dr. Musalem's leadership and the board's guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we have the recommended action, the Crestwood Board of Education approved the hiring of Zahra, and help me with the pronunciation of the last name?
Zahra.
Zahra, Ruer, according to the CFT Contract MA3 Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law, see Attachment 6A3. All right, so we just need a final vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
We're ready.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right, uh, thank you. So now we move on. Hey, I get to turn it back over to you, to Dr. Yousif. Oh, your mute button, there you go.
Thank you, President Garcia and Board of Education. So superintendent's report. We have no action items, Dave, a couple informational items. First, we'd like to congratulate Mrs. Maryam Azim, bilingual facilitator and specialized professional for nine years, who is retiring effective February 1st, 2021. Thank you, Mrs. Azim, for your years of support and your dedication to the Crestwood students and community. Uh, so superintendent's message, first off, athletics, well, as we know, we've had, MHSAA, Michigan Department of Education, and the Governor's Office have lifted the pause so we can get back into winter sports. Boys, girl, boys and girls basketball will begin January 16th, wrestling January 16th, boys and girls bowling January 18th, and boys swimming January 18th. I recommend that all athletes or student athletes who are looking to be part of these events continue to check the Crestwood High School Athletics Department website. And I know our athletic director, Mr. Mike Schley, updates that website regularly. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Schley. Uh, special recognition and thanks. You know, this community is phenomenal. We have so many people who step up to the plate when asked, when not asked. Uh, first off, we want to thank the Amity Foundation, who donated close to 100 turkeys and gift baskets for Thanksgiving to our Crestwood families. Uh, that was, you know, a phenomenal gesture. Um, I had the privilege and the honor to deliver many of these, and, you know, seeing these, these children and the families was, you know, it's a blessing. So I want to thank the Amity Foundation. Um, also, I think Mr. Hassan Bezi, who donated furniture for staff at Crestwood Schools. I want to thank Zaman International's partnership with our schools to assist families in need for winter hats, gloves, and coats during this cold season. I wanna, you know, thank the Riverside Middle School Team, specifically the school psychologists and social workers who work together. Um, and they sponsored over 20 families for the holidays with winter gear and school supplies. Um, they put that together. It was a great thing. And, um, you know, we were able to deliver gift baskets to over 20 families, so that was a very nice thing. I mean, all of this that we're talking about is impacting and helping our Crestwood families. We're keeping it local, we're keeping it in the neighborhood and the district. I also wanna thank the Crestwood High School Girls Basketball Team. Coach Makari and the Girls Varsity Basketball Team participated in adopting a family for the holidays. Again, you know, helping our, our community, our students actively involved in that. Our, our student athletes represented who the Crestwood Schools are. Of course, I want to welcome our new board trustee, Mr. Mohammed Sabal. Welcome to the team in this capacity. I know you've been part of the team as a volunteer football coach and in so many other things, and I don't want to start listing because I might miss a few things. But I want to welcome you to the team. Congratulations to trustee Kaminsky for your reelection to continue serving as part of the Crestwood Schools Board of Education. Um, again, as I mentioned in the study session, I do want, like to mention again here, I want to thank, uh, former trustee Krzenik, Karlyn Krzenik, for her years of support and her mentorship of myself. And I want to thank the family of Mrs. Donna Hansenek, former president, Lee Donna Hansenek, for her mentorship and her years of serving the Crestwood community. So welcome trustee Sabal, again, welcome trustee Kaminsky, and welcome to all the new, to all the board members as we truly are going to be a team of eight. Thank you for that support, for your support always. Piggybacking off of that, it is Board Appreciation Month. You know, if we were in person, it'd be a lot more fun, I promise. I would get up and do a dance for you, but I can't because I gotta do it behind the screen, then you won't see me, you know, but don't hold me accountable next time we are face to face. You had your chance today. You know, being a board of education, I, you know, being the fact that I've been in public education now for almost 23, 24 years, I can't believe I've been doing this as long. Board of education members, you know, there is no, there, there is no more humble politically, political position. You're not politicians, although you gotta run for the position. And I say that because everything that you do is for the benefit of the children. There is no personal benefit in being a board and member. The personal benefit in being a board member is that intrinsic feeling of, you know, seeing young men and young women grow up and graduate and be successful. What you do is, is a calling that you don't make, you don't, I mean, you make pennies on what you do for the number of hours you put in. Uh, your campaigns, when you run, probably cost, you know, 20 times, maybe 50 times more than it, than the money you bring in in the six years of your term. Um, you, 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 you unselfishly designate so much of your time, you know, for your constituents, your community, and for our kids. And then you gotta deal with people like me on a regular basis, and I apologize for that. But the good thing about it is, this board of education, I truly do appreciate you, and I appreciate the former board members as well, because we have been a team. You know, it's, it's going, you know, it, I was, I was honored to come in as your superintendent in November 2019. We dealt with a pandemic, we dealt with some many changing elements, and you have been there not only for me and for the team, but you've been there for the families and the community and the kids. And you have been part of some of the most difficult decisions that I have ever been part of. But you made those decisions easy because you allowed us to work as a team. I appreciate you, and I know that the community appreciates you. So just with that said, thank you, board. And I want the community to know, I, as your superintendent, can attest to the fact that you have seven board members who do not take a day off. I can attest to that, and sometimes I wish they would, it'd make my life a little easier. But God bless them for all the work that they did, they do, and all the support that they give us. So board, thank you, and on behalf of all the children and my children, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Um, so as an update to our calendar, Martin Luther King Junior Day is January 18th, 2021. So no school next Monday. Um, and then finally, on a sad note, I do want to give my condolences to the family of Mayor Pletko. We lost Mayor Pletko recently, and him and I, you know, we start, you know, I did not know Mayor Pletko before I became superintendent. And we started, we started developing a friendship and a camaraderie because we were looking at how we can tie Crestwood Schools and the city as one to take our district and our community to the next level. So on, on behalf of the team, I would like to send my condolences to the family of Mayor Pletko. And please know that Mayor Pletko and his family are in our prayers. So with that said, President Garcia, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate all of the support that you and the board have given our team.
Thank you. I saw that there were two hands up, and before I call on the hands, if your comments are in regard, in regards to board comments and questions, can we save that and give our community the opportunity to speak in case there are any public comments? So, so with that being said, David, uh, do we have any public comments? I'm sorry?
Yes, there is one written comment tonight. This is from Nabila. She says, "Good evening, board members. I was happy to receive the letter that was sent out last week about getting students back for in-person learning. How confident are you that students will get back by March? In November, I asked if there was a plan in place for when students go back, and the answer was yes. Now the letter says you guys are finalizing a plan and have to talk to parents about what is being offered. My concern is getting my kids back. My third and fourth graders have been having a lot of anxiety, especially coming back from the holiday break. They are great students who do their work and always attend their classes, but off-screen, we have meltdowns, high frustration levels, and it's hard for them to express their feelings. Between isolation and versatile learning, it's taking a toll on them. The more time they get inside the classroom, the better off they are." Thank you.
I will allow Dr. Yousif, if you'd like to comment.
Yes, thank you. First, we understand the social and emotional impact that this is having on our children. We are extremely confident that our plan is going to be successful come March. In November, yes, the plan we have is not being created from scratch. This plan was already developed, and now we're finalizing the plan and working out all the kinks based on the latest updates from the Michigan Department of Education, the State Health Department, as well as the CDC. What I would highly recommend is that for any family whose children are struggling with social emotional needs during this online learning, to let your, your children's teacher know. Our social work and school psychologists, on a regular basis, will reach out to support. They're trained in this, as well as our counselors, and they'll be there to support. So we're very confident that in March, we will be completely ready to roll back in with this reintegration plan. The one thing we have learned about this pandemic is that we have to always have an open-ended plan, and we have to be flexible. So what we have done since the beginning is we've had a plan that has been one of foundational support, where in turn, we can make the adjustments as needed based on what the professionals and the scientists tell us we need to do. And therefore, as educators, we'll adjust it with our profession to meet those needs. So please, and, uh, Mr. Green, I'm also gonna add that this parent, if, please, reach out to your school or reach out to my office, and we'll set something up to help your children. Um, I will tell you, as a parent myself, um, I, I've had to help my own children because it's not, it's not easy for them, and so I understand.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that you mentioned that at the end, that the parents reach out to their, their, their students' teachers. All right, um, Mr. Green, is, are there any others?
That is all the comments for tonight.
All right, very good. So what I did was I wrote down in order the hands that popped up just at the tail end of Dr. Musalem's comment. So with that, I'm going to start with trustee Janoon.
Um, first of all, I would just, well, the only comment I have is I'd like to congratulate Zane Bezi. He committed to Campbell in North Carolina, um, Division One school. And he, he really has had a very successful high school career, and I just think, you know, I love, as a, as a parent of, you know, an student athlete at Crestwood, I just, I love to see that our students are, are going places, and he's well deserved. So just wanted to say congratulations to him.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next hand that was up was trustee Sabal.
I would also like to congratulate Zane Bezi and also Adam Sabal for committing to Madonna University to play football. So congratulations to our young student athletes. Uh, he follows Bilal Badun, who committed to Madonna last year. I do want to also reiterate my condolences on behalf of myself, my family, to the family of Mayor Pletko and the entire community, all the citizens of Dearborn Heights. And also, um, my condolences to, um, the late Sheriff Benny Napoleon and his family and the entire county. And to our dear friend, Mr. Mike Jafer, who, uh, who has been very close to, to the deceased Benny Napoleon for many, many years. So condolences to both families and the entire community of Wayne County and Dearborn Heights.
All right, thank you. And from there, we have trustee Berry.
Okay, I just wanted to take the time to thank all these beautiful students for these beautiful letters that we received from Kenlock. I have to say, I honestly read every single one of them, and it really touched me. Um, I couldn't tell you, I can tell you how happy I was to receive these and to know that you guys are thinking about us board members. Kenlock really outdid yourself. Kenlock really outdid yourself and to Ms. Nasreen Saab for the nice gift that she sent the board members. Thank you for your thoughtfulness. And thank you, Mo Sobah Saba, for acknowledging Benny, you know, Sheriff Benny. Yeah, that was a hard hit for the whole county. And I, I also want to do, welcome you to the board. We're very happy to have you here and we're looking forward to working together as one team and moving the district forward. And to Sukaminsky, congratulations for being here with us again.
Thank you.
All right. The next one was trustee Fawaz.
Thank you. So I won't repeat everything everybody has said, but I did want to say Happy New Year to all and to all our community, district and staff. I also wanted to say thank you also to the Highview, to Allison and her staff and Nasreen Saad and her staff and the athletic department, everyone that, you know, acknowledged us. They really don't have to, you know, like Dr. Musalem said, we, we do like to do this. We, I don't know that we like to, but we, we agree to. And it's all in the best interest of our kids. So I never expect anything, but I, I did want to say thank you. And, you know, welcome trustee Saba to the group. And I know, you know, welcome trustee Elzayet. I know it's only been like one meeting before now, so we're all fairly new together and, you know, congratulations to Sue for coming back. And hopefully it'll be a great year for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last I see is trustee Kaminsky.
Hi, I, I guess I'm going to sound like a repeat, but I wanted to welcome Mo and obviously Danielle, but you're old news now because you've been here for a month. So all congratulations and I look forward to working with you. Excited with the new officers in place and looking forward to, you know, a good year together. I also wanted to thank everyone for the recognition and the gifts that we received. Again, we certainly don't expect it, but I'll be honest, I like gifts. It was fun to receive them. So thank you very much. And to the families of Benny Napoleon and our mayor, Dan Paletko, both succumbed to COVID. So it's very real, it stays real, it's very scary. Both of these were vibrant men and I don't think anyone expected it. So my condolences to the families and prayers for their successors to move forward in a difficult time.
All right. And I know that you didn't have your hand up. Trustee Elzayet, was there any comments or questions?
Well, I don't think anything I'd have to say would be good now, but but most importantly though, I did want to make sure that the teachers and the staff and the students of all the Crestwood District get my thanks for the gifts. And I, I thought it was very sweet and kind. Actually, I was so surprised, which even made it all the more nicer. So thank you all very much. I'm actually using my Hillcrest pen right here, so that, that came handy. Also, my condolences to, to the city and to the county on Sheriff Napoleon and Mayor Paletko. I had the honor in my career to work closely with both of them and their administrations and it's a big loss for the county and, and the city. So my condolences on, on that. And Happy New Year to our Crestwood community. Thank you.
All right. And I, and I know that I'm not going to keep everyone. I don't want to sound like a broken record. Congratulations to trustee Saba. Welcome to the Crestwood Board of Education. We look forward to, to having you here. Congratulations to Sue on your reelection and then congratulations to the new executive board here. We're all trustees, but we will definitely all work together in making sure that we work with our administration to push this district above and beyond. Again, condolences to the Paletko family. And then one that I knew very, very well was Benny himself. Golfed with him and was at many fundraisers and definitely a good friend. And yeah, the Jafer brothers, I know this was not easy, not easy for anyone. So condolences to all those in, in the city of Dearborn Heights and in the county of Wayne. Welcome back to 2021. And all I will say is that the challenge now for this district is to see what we can do as quickly and most importantly, as safely as we can to get students back into the classrooms because number one, ultimately it's about safety. We, we want them there, there's no doubt about it. We want our buildings open, we want to see kids out and about. But we definitely want to make sure that we do it cautiously, carefully and as safely as possible. And then lastly, I just want to say I, I got the message from Zane after, I think, last week sometime when he made this commitment. So I've known Zane since he was just a little boy. His brothers both played football over at Riverside. Zane played football at Riverside. And as a matter of fact, I got several pictures of him and his brothers and I and all together. So congratulations to him on this magnificent move for him. And I know that his family is very, very happy. And then congratulations to the other athletes who have signed in other schools here in Michigan. Sadly, he's going to be leaving, but I know it's going to be a good move for him. And then of course, Happy New Year, welcome back. 2021, we know is going to be much better. I mean, it just has to be, right? And as we, as we move forward and thank you to the entire Crestwood administration and the staff and the students for the wonderful gifts that they sent to all of us. We don't expect them, but I agree, when we get them, it, it really is nice to be thought of. It really is nice to, to get, open the mailbox and, I, I got this, but to get the box and everything else. Like, wow, that was, that was special. So I appreciate it. I have nothing else and with nothing else being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Salwa.
Salwa.
Okay, so I heard a motion from trustee Kaminsky with support from Mr. Saba, trustee Saba. And I will show that we are adjourned at eight, 10 p.m. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you and thank you to our audience and have a wonderful night. Goodbye until night.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.